Yes, we're in.
One more time.
I would like to call this meeting to order. Thank you everyone for being here today. First off, we're going to consider the agenda that we have in front of us, which is the floodplain workshop. Motion to approve that?
Mayor Protem, I moved at the city council through agendas presented.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so today, we have a very special floodplain workshop that the city staff has graciously put together for this community so that we can all be better informed about development in this community, specifically Henderson County, but also our region is facing a lot of major issues with development, especially after the hurricane. And so we are doing our best to become better educated and hopes that the information that we get will help us make better policy decisions for the community. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mike Hupman, who is our stormwater director. And he is going to introduce our special guest. Thank you all for being here.
Mayor Protem, we're the city council before we turn it over to Mike. Just will briefly let you know, we do have folks from the state here and our team has put together a presentation for you. We've laid out an agenda where we'll spend fifteen hours or so on floodplain 101. Then we'll spend another thirty minutes kind of talking through floodplain development, I mean floodplain mapping development. Then we'll have fifteen minutes at the end to kind of finalize and general questions. So we're going to keep it to two hours. A lot of information to cover, so we're not taking questions at this point. This is really just kind of information presentation. Council, you obviously have the right to ask questions and get general information, but we're not taking questions from the audience. And we'll go from there. And at one point, we'll ask city attorney speaker to come up and make a short presentation on what has to happen if you want to establish any kind of moratorium. We're not going to ask you to take any action. It's a very complicated process. We just want to give you some information about that today. Let you roll it over, think about it, and then you would give the city attorney different or any direction at your February meeting. That's okay.
All right. Mr. Hupman?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, counsel, for setting this workshop up and appreciate the attendance. I do want to introduce our state technical experts. We have Mr. Terry Fox, who's the Western Regional Coordinator for the State NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program. And Mr. Steve Garrett, who's the State NFIP Coordinator. Mr. Garrett's going to jump in here in a little bit and talk, give an update on floodplain mapping and where we're at currently with FEMA mapping efforts and post HALEEN, how that impacted FEMA. I'm just going to second what John said. There is a lot of information around floodplain development, floodplain regulation. I'm going to do my best to cover the information that I provided in this presentation in fifteen minutes. So I'm going to not try and speak so fast that it goes over everything, but also try and be concise. As any questions come up, please feel free to ask them. I'm happy to dive deeper into any one of these subjects. So with that, I'll kind of get started. So obviously, the purpose of this meeting is to educate the council, the public, about floodplain regulation, mapping, and then some discussion about what is reasonable development in the floodplain. And the goal of that is to equip you all, the council, with tools to guide future floodplain management. Brief overview of the agenda. We have kind of the local floodplain regulations, an overview of floodplain mapping, time for some discussion, and then time permitting, there's some additional information, some topics we can discuss at the end related more to mitigation, things like that. So starting out, understanding floodplain regulations. I have a number of topics on here. Kind of will start with the why, which is the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. That's why we have floodplain regulations. It's so that our residents have access to flood insurance, our federal flood insurance. The how is the local floodplain management ordinance. That's how we regulate floodplain development. And the where is the special flood hazard areas. So that is where we regulate floodplain development. And then all the other topics you see on there are kind of the, you know, the details of the how. So those are the individual, you know, specifics of our regulation. A little bit of background on the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Policy. There's a number of acronyms you'll hear. I'll try and make sure that I explain each one. But again, the goal of that is to provide affordable flood insurance to property owners and reduce the socio-economic impact of floods by mitigating flood risk. You know, the big important thing, it enables property owners in participating communities, which the city of Hendersonville is, the ability to purchase insurance against flood losses. And in order to qualify to be in that program, the community has to adopt and enforce a floodplain management ordinance to regulate development in the flood hazard areas. So how do we regulate development in flood hazard areas? We adopt a local floodplain management ordinance called, in Hendersonville, the Flood Damage Protection Ordinance. So ours was amended in 2023 to include the revisions from 160D. It's based on the model ordinance that's developed by the state. It outlines in great detail how the city will regulate development in flood hazard areas. And I think a very important thing to note is that when we're talking about regulation or floodplain regulation, the local community, the city of Hendersonville, is the only one that has the statutory authority to enforce floodplain regulations. The state, the federal government, they cannot enforce floodplain regulations at the local level. It is up to the community. So this ordinance is how we do that. Now, the state and the federal government will come in and audit our ordinance and make sure that we are in compliance with the NFIP through our ordinance and that we're enforcing the things of our ordinance. But ultimately, it is our responsibility as the community to regulate that development. Here's a lot of objectives taken from the ordinance. I'm not going to read through every one. I did highlight some that I think are, you know, in my opinion, the most important. I'll leave the slide up for a little bit so folks can read this. This is in the ordinance. But, you know, number one, the goal of this ordinance, the objective, is to protect human life, safety, and health. Also, to minimize damage to public facilities and utilities, minimize damage to public and private property, and maintain the natural and beneficial functions of floodplains. There's, you know, about six or seven other things in there, all related to the same thing. Minimize losses, protect property, maintain a stable tax base. All right, so floodplain development. From the perspective of floodplain development, development is any man-made change to improved or unimproved real estate that is in the floodplain or in the special flood hazard area. Okay? So that can include mining, dredging, filling, paving, storage of equipment materials. There's no designation between development and redevelopment in the floodplain ordinance. Okay? There's a section of general standards. Those standards apply to all land in the special flood hazard area. And then there are specific standards which apply to areas where there are base flood elevations have been determined. So for the city of Hendersonville, all of our special flood hazard areas do have base flood elevations determined. We do have floodways and non-encroachment areas that have been determined. So if you look on the right-hand side, that's called the regulation staircase. Some communities, not very many now, I think, have no map, but there are regulations that apply under the federal code 60.3 that each one builds on top of each other. So that's why they call it the staircase. And so all the regulations from one apply as you move up the staircase. And they become more specific as you move higher and higher up the staircase. Yes?
What does base flood elevation mean?
That's a great question. I'll get to that in a couple of slides. So our general standards are that all new construction and substantial improvement, that will be described in the later slide, are at, these are the general standards. Okay, so this applies to all floodplain areas. They're adequately, and this is directly from the model ordinance from the NFIP. They're adequately anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, lateral movement. So if it gets flooded, it's not going to get moved off of its base. Constructed with flood-resistant materials, the utility equipment, the gas, the electrical, the water and sewer facilities, those are all designed to minimize damage from flooding. These are for structures in the special flood hazard area. This isn't, doesn't, you know. And then there's thirteen more provisions to that that are specific to water and sewer and onsite wastewater systems, the specific requirements for subdivisions, structures that might be in multiple flood zones. So if you have a structure that's in the floodway versus the special flood hazard area, I'll detail what those mean in a second. Then the structure has to meet the highest requirements. The specific standards, again, all the general standards also apply for residential construction. The lowest floor elevation shall be elevated no lower than the base flood elevation. Okay? So if the base flood elevation is 2,080 feet above sea level, then the lowest habitable space in that structure has to be elevated to that elevation. Okay? For non-residential construction, floodproofing is an option. That means that the structure doesn't have to be elevated, but it has to be floodproofed. And there is a whole technical guidance on what constitutes floodproofing. There's dry floodproofing and wet floodproofing. And there are specific standards that have to be met to determine if a building is properly floodproofed. It's not, someone can't just put a piece of plywood on the front of the building and say, "My building's floodproofed." So again, I don't want to gloss over anything, but we could go into very deep detail on what the specific and general standards are. And I'm happy to answer further questions. For manufactured homes, okay, they also shall be elevated. And the reference level, the reference level being the lowest floor elevation compared to the base flood elevation, has to be no lower than the regulatory flood protection elevation. And I'll tell you what that means here in just a second. I've got some more slides to get to. It has to be securely anchored and adequately, or securely anchored to an adequately anchored foundation to resist flotation, collapse, and lateral movement. This is for newer, this is for new development, okay, of manufactured homes. An evacuation plan has to be developed for the residents in order to evacuate those people during a flood event. Okay? Mr. Lou Holloway, the zoning has a little bit different view, or not view, but some little bit different requirements related to floodplain development. You know, the overall, there are floodplain protection standards also in the zoning ordinance. And I don't want to say they conflict with the flood damage ordinance, but they have some provisions that are not in the flood damage prevention ordinance, specifically related to new development and redevelopment. And remember, there's no designation between new development and redevelopment in the flood damage protection ordinance or the floodplain ordinance, as we'll call it. So the, you know, the protection standards, the primary objective, again, is to, you know, for there to preserve and maintain the natural function of the floodplains in an undisturbed vegetated state. The whole goal of that is to maintain flood capacity, protect public safety, control stormwater, improve water quality. Now, that being said, the city of Hendersonville has a lot of property in the floodplain. Okay? So we have to balance floodplain regulation with economic development and growth. And so there are provisions for allowing some development in the floodplain. So 17-2 states that land in the special flood hazard area can be used up to 25% for parking. All right? So that just means you could have a parking lot in the special flood hazard area. And then for new development, a developer can fill, so they could bring in material dirt into the site and raise up 10% of the parcel that's in the floodplain. So if you had a one-acre parcel and the whole acre was in the floodplain, an acre being 43,000 square feet, you could fill 4,300 square feet of that parcel. That's your 10% threshold. And then you could build a building on top of that 4,000 square feet to, you know, make better use of that property, instead of having to elevate the building. Okay? Or floodproof it if it's a non-residential construction. Now, for redevelopment, okay, redevelopment allows, you know, land that's been previously developed that might have gone, you know, the building's been torn down, or it's a sat vacant or something like that. It allows for those properties to be redeveloped as long as the redevelopment does not result in any further loss of floodplain functionality. Now, that in itself can be subjective. Okay? What I might think is a loss of floodplain functionality might not be what someone else views as a loss of floodplain functionality. Okay? So getting into our definitions, maybe I should have started with these slides. Our special flood hazard areas, so the where, okay, where are we, where are these regulations occurring? So if you look at this diagram here, we have the, we have the special flood hazard area, we have the floodplain. Okay, the floodplain is the area of land which we, based on modeling, say that during the 1% annual chance flood, that is a flood that has a 1% chance of happening every year, based on statistical analysis of rainfall, flooding. Okay? That's where flooding, we know that will, is that's where it will occur. And this is going to relate back to the base flood elevation. Okay? Within the floodplain, you have the flood fringe, the floodway, and then you have your stream channel. So the stream channel, that's like Mud Creek. That's where the water's flowing all the time. The floodway is where, if it rains two or three inches, you're going to see water flowing out in that area. It's the area of highest velocity, the most dangerous area during a flood. That's the floodway. That's the area that you want to protect at all costs, direct development away from that area at all cost. The flood fringe is the area between the floodway and the edge of the 100-year floodplain. Okay? And with, you see that brown material in there? That's your hypothetical fill material, where over time, people have come in and placed fill in the flood fringe to allow for development.
Mike, what can you get off that? You don't know, and I know the floodplain professionals and stormwater professionals don't like this, but the 1% annual chance flood, you also hear that called the 100-year flood, right?
Correct.
Even though it's a misnomer, it's not once every 100 years, it's 1%.
So one out of 100%. So somehow that got confounded into the 100-year flood. If you look at it over a 30-year period, it's about a 30% chance that that area will flood.
Okay.
Okay, so if you have a house in the 100-year floodplain, there's a 30% average chance that over the 30-year period of that mortgage, that it will flood. So that's kind of part of why the mortgage requirements are what they, that you have flood insurance in 100-year floodplain.
We hear the 100-year flood, so that's.
And I'll get a little, again, every, specifically, 100-year flood and base flood elevations and how those elevations and amounts of where flooding occurs happens is all based on very detailed computer models that are very technical. And we could spend a lot of time talking about the intricacies of those as well. But I'm not going to dive too deep into that. Okay, so some definitions based on this slide. The land in the floodplain is subject to a 1% greater chance of being flooded in any given year. All right? The floodplain is any land susceptible to being inundated by water from any source. All right? The base flood is that, another way of saying, the 1% greater chance flood or the 100-year flood. So some of these terms kind of are synonyms to each other. And then our floodways and non-encroachment areas, these are the channel of the river or water course, that adjacent lands that are reserved to discharge that base flood. Okay? Now, base flood elevation and freeboard. So the base flood, again, the flood having a 1% chance of being equaled or exceeded in one given year. Okay? The base flood elevation is the level that the water from that 1% flood would reach. Okay? So when that 1% flood happens, how high up is the water going to rise? And then if you look at a map topographically, okay, that's going to create some perimeter boundary at that elevation. How are those base flood elevations determined? Succinctly, this is an oversimplification. They're based on hydraulic and hydrologic models that take into account things like topography, so the shape of the land, the rainfall patterns in the area that you are living in, the water flow in the stream channels, existing obstructions in the stream channels. That's things like culverts, that's things like bridges. That's also buildings and other things that have been built in the floodplain. Those are all act as obstructions that obstruct the flow of water as it moves downstream through the floodplain. Okay? So all of those things go into a computer model. And the computer model takes, you know, all that data and it says, "Here, based on this land map, is where the flooding will occur." And that's, that's a very oversimplification of how FEMA creates that base flood elevation. Okay? Freeboard, another term, is a additional height. So the NFIP requires that the, that communities regulate to the base flood elevation. Okay? But community can adopt on its own an additional level of protection called freeboard, which is an additional height, because we're talking about elevations here, an additional height beyond the base flood elevation that accounts for factors that can contribute to flood heights greater than the height calculated by the base flood. So that could, that could be additional obstructions that aren't incorporated and that the model hasn't been updated, that, you know, when they create the model, they're assuming that bridges and culverts and things are all flowing freely. They're not assuming that things are getting blocked up with mobile homes or debris or things that obstruct the flow greater than what's in the model. In Hendersonville, we have a freeboard requirement of two feet. Okay? And so when you add the freeboard to the base flood elevation, you get what's called the regulatory flood protection elevation. All right? So when somebody goes, example, somebody wants to build a house on an undeveloped parcel in the floodplain. Okay? They come to the city and they say, "I want to build this house here." We look at the map and we say, "Okay, this parcel's in the 100-year floodplain. And the base flood elevation is 2,080 feet above sea level. And the ground elevation on this parcel is 2,078 feet above sea level." So that means that you either have to elevate the lowest floor of the structure to 2,082 feet, four feet above the ground. Or if you're able to fill the parcel, okay, with, if you can get in that 10% threshold and add enough fill, you can fill the parcel up and build the house on top of that fill. There are requirements for the fill. You can't just bring in a bunch of construction debris or old concrete and say, "I built my house up on here and it's safe." It has, there's, there's specific standards to the fill material that it's placed on. Okay? And then there's some other caveats to areas of a home, like a garage, that are not supposed to be inhabited. Those can, so you could have a home that's split-level where the garage is below that base flood elevation because it's not being used for habitation or a walkout basement that's not being used to live in. And then you could have the living area be elevated above that regulatory flood protection elevation. For non-residential construction, that would be floodproofing. Okay? All right, now, no-rise requirements. So we talked about the floodplain. Now we're going to talk about the floodway and the non-encroachment areas. So floodways and non-encroachment areas, again, these are extremely hazardous areas due to the velocity of floodwaters that have erosion potential to carry debris and potential projectiles during the base flood. This is the highest-risk area where we don't, we want to direct development away. Now, the city has been participating in NFIP since 1982, but we have been building buildings in Hendersonville since the early 1800s. So there's lots of buildings that are in, not lots, but there are buildings that were, have been built in the floodway prior to any of these regulations that are still standing today and are still being operated. Okay? We can't just go in and tell these people, "You have to tear this building down and get out of here." All right? But for new development, no encroachments, including fill, no new construction or substantial improvements or other developments are permitted unless, A, it's demonstrated that that encroachment would not increase the base flood level by any amount, hundreds of a foot, hundred tenths of, you know, a tenth of a foot. It's not allowed. And that is determined, again, through that H&amp;H analysis. An engineer would take the existing model, which is free for the public to access. They would run the model, and then they would put their proposed development in the model. And they would say, "If I put this obstruction here, it's either going to increase the flood elevations or it's not going to increase the flood elevations." If it doesn't increase flood elevations, then they are allowed to put the building there. Now, there is another process called a conditional letter of map revision. People that were familiar with the Publix project, that is the route that they went through. They had to get a letter of map revision because that development caused a very small, two hundredths of a foot rise in floodwaters around that area. Okay? So they had to submit to FEMA that this is what our project, FEMA reviews that, and they say, "This is acceptable, this is unacceptable." If they accept it, then FEMA's saying, "Okay, this is an acceptable amount of change, and we're going to have to revise our maps." That's the letter of map revision process. Okay? So that's, that's another, you know, more often than not, you see a no-rise certification. People are not typically submitting a letter of map revision. All right, substantial damage improvement. This is one that's come up more specifically with HALEEN. There was a little bit of discussion about this prior to HALEEN with some development projects. What is substantial damage and improvement? You'll often hear it referred to as the 50% rule. So again, this applies to all structures in the special flood hazard area. More often, it becomes triggered by what we call a pre-firm structure. This means a structure that was built prior to the city adopting its flood insurance maps. All right? So if the structure was built in 1980 or 1971, or any time before we adopted our flood maps, it's considered pre-firm. All right? That means it was not built to the flood protection standards that we currently have in place. If that building is damaged by any origin, a tree could fall on it, there could be a fire or a flood, or someone runs their car through the front of the building, okay? That, if the cost to repair that damage to that structure is 50% or greater than the structure's value, just the structure, not the property and everything else, just the structure's value, then when they repair it, they have to bring it up to the current standards. So for a residential structure, that would mean that they have to elevate the structure. For a non-residential structure, they would have to floodproof the structure. Yes?
Is that based on the last appraisal?
So the initial assessment of substantial damage is based on, I just got through doing a bunch of these. So it's, it's based off our best available data. A property owner can come to the city and say, "The tax assessed value is lower than what I think the property's worth." And if they submit a professional appraisal that meets the requirements of our appraisal review, then we can say, "Yes, this house is worth more than what the tax value says." The other option is they can have a quote, a professional contractor prepare a quote that says, "You estimated the cost to repair this at X, but our professional quote says it's Y." We would then review all that and make sure it includes everything that has to go into what's called the cost of substantial improvement, which includes a great number of things related specifically to the function of the structure. Okay? Substantial improvement, very similar to substantial damage, except it's more of a voluntary process where someone might buy a house or a building in the floodplain, okay, that is older, and they want to renovate that building and, and, you know, gut the inside, put a new kitchen in, put new floors and everything. If the, if what they plan to do to that building is going to cost more than 50% of the building's value, they have to bring it into compliance. Now, when caveat of this is that this is all calculated over a one-year period. So technically, that, for substantial damage, for substantial, or sorry, for substantial improvement. For substantial damage, if the building is substantially damaged, you can't just wait a year and then say, "I'm going to repair the building now, it's been a year." This is only for substantial improvement. Admittedly, that creates a bit of a loophole in our ordinance because someone could do what's called phased improvements. And they could say, "Well, I'm only going to do this amount of improvements this year, and I'm going to wait until next year." And right now, as it stands, we cannot stop that. Okay? We could say, "Okay, you're going to do the floors and the plumbing this year, and you're going to come back next year and put a new roof on it." There, again, there are even more specifics about whether you're addressing health code items that have to basically, you know, and, and these types of things. But for trying to be concise, I know I'm over time already.
You're right, keep going.
I'm getting to the end of the substantial, the initial ones. So, all right, that covers the basics of floodplain management in 30 minutes. Now we will go into the overview of floodplain mapping. I'm going to just do a brief discussion on what the floodplain maps show and do not show. Because I know that's been a big question. It's like, "Well, I wasn't in the floodplain, why did I get flooded?" Or "How could I have been flooded if I wasn't in the floodplain?" And then Mr. Garrett is going to do a presentation, kind of an update on where we are with the FEMA flood maps and their process of updating the maps. And then I can touch on some alternative mapping resources. And that'll kind of wrap up the information session and leave us some time for discussion to answer questions that you all might have. Thanks. Okay, so FEMA flood maps. FEMA is the agency, Federal Emergency Management Agency, that is responsible for mapping the floodplains. They administer the. They administer the National Flood Insurance Program, the NFIP. The states, different states handle it differently. We in North Carolina are very, very fortunate to have a very active and involved state NFIP program. I believe you said we were the first technical partner to FEMA for the mapping.
Our state.
The first state technical partner for FEMA. So North Carolina has a very robust floodplain management at the state level program. Okay, and because of that, we have very good resources, like online tools that you can go put your address in and it'll tell you exactly what your flood risk is and, and other things that provide even greater detail that make floodplain administration much easier than it would be in other areas. But, so FEMA floodmaps. In order to produce a FEMA floodmap, to get that base flood elevation, to show where the floodplain is, FEMA conducts what's called a flood insurance study. Okay, so that is a report that includes that modeling and things like that that details and summarizes the analysis of flood hazards in a community. Look at historic rainfall records, the topography, development, different, all these different things. And then based on that insurance study, they produce what's called a flood insurance rate map, or the FIRM. You'll hear it called. And the FIRM is the basis for floodplain management, mitigation and insurance activities under the National Flood Insurance Program. So the FIRM is the floodplain map. The picture you're looking at on the right-hand side of the screen is the flood insurance rate map for that area. That's the south side of town that you see right there, our most flood-prone area. And so the blue and white hashed is the floodway. The light blue is the floodplain. The yellow, or the light blue is the 100-year floodplain, the 1% annual chance floodplain. The yellow is the 500-year or the 0.2% chance floodplain. Okay, and then what the flood insurance rate map is designed to do is help insurance adjusters determine what your insurance rate is going to be. Because when you go buy a building and you get a mortgage for a structure in the floodplain, you have to, for federally backed mortgages, you have to have flood insurance. Now, if you own the property outright, you're not required to have insurance. It's a good idea, but there's no requirement for that. So that helps insurance and lenders determine flood risk. It helps communities determine or understand our flood risk, understand how many properties are in the floodplain, what, you know, total number, what our total risk is. And again, it's created through partnerships between the local communities, the state government and the federal government. And then that, that, what you see on the bottom, that 1, 2, 3, 4, that's kind of the overview of the process of how the flood insurance study and the FIRM are created. So there's a discovery session. They look at all the best available data sources, past floods, climate data, rainfall, intensity data, things like that. They analyze and map the, you know, that data. Then they create what's called a preliminary flood map, which is the first iteration of the map that they will put out to the community and they'll say, you know, do you agree with this? Do we need to make changes? Do you, can you, because some people will contest that and say, this is not correct, I'm not in the floodplain, this is why. And then finally, the map gets adopted. That's like the last step. The community has to adopt the map and say, we agree with this. This is where we're going to regulate floodplain development. Okay, yes.
What is the frequency that that is done?
That is a good question. It's supposed to be on a five-year period, but things are behind schedule.
Yeah, and, and I guess the real, technically, the rule is that FEMA should assess every five years, which they do do, but we don't necessarily update or do the studies. And I'll talk a little bit more about it. But looking at the process here, the discovery process that we did last, or what we call scoping, occurred in June of 2015 for Henderson County and all the communities participated. That's back when Susan was floodplain administrator. We are going to release those maps later this year. So it's been 10 years to get through this whole process. Part of it has to do with the funding stream and then others, as you'll see when I discuss the, what we've done over the last several years. We've had a lot of maps going out across the state, so we have to, you know, stage those up and get them out in release groups. So that does take time to coordinate by FEMA and some other internal changes that they made in the mapping process over the last 10 years. Delayed that work as well. But it doesn't happen overnight, that's for sure.
And so we base all of our regulation off of these floodmaps, but these floodmaps are limited. Okay, FEMA is a national federal organization. So they're doing this across the entire country. All right, so what are some of the limitations? Generally, you can sum those up as the reports and the data is often outdated. Okay, the reports are based off models. They are based off of computer models. They do take into account, you know, real data, real rainfall data, real observations of floods that have happened in communities and things like that. But they are models, so there are assumptions made in any model. There is no perfect model. And those assumptions inherently create errors. You can refine the model as, as much as you can, but there's always going to be something that you cannot capture in that model. Okay, and then specifically, if we're talking about HALENE, these reports often do not, they're not designed to show the worst-case scenario, okay, which HALENE is the worst-case scenario. All right, 1,000, 1,500-year flood, whatever you want to call it. If you look at the models, the models are looking at, you know, statistically, every five years, 10 years, 25, 50, 100, 500, maybe 1,000, when is this storm going to occur? And then they create the maps based on that. And the 100-year storm is the map that most communities adopt. Okay, and so those are some of the limitations. And if you look here, I'll highlight, the map on the left, the gray, is the regulatory flood area. That's the, the current 100-year floodplain in Hendersonville. On the right, what we have is the recent really released advisory flood data from the state of North Carolina. And all of those purple, pinkish areas you see are areas that were shown to flood, but those are not reflected in the 2008 maps. Now, one thing that in particular has changed that affects this is the way the models are created. Most floodmaps are done using what's called a one-dimensional model. Okay, so you look at the floodplain as one dimension, straight across. Like if you drew a line like this, here's an obstruction, here's a bridge, the water's just moving through like this. Newer modeling efforts with increased data availability, higher computing power are moving to a two-dimensional model. Okay, the two-dimensional models are very much better at describing localized flood problems, taking into account things like stormwater system data, better topography, LiDAR data, and they can create a much better picture of flooding. They can also over-predict flooding a little bit, so there's a balance there. Okay, now FEMA, again, a federal agency, has not come out with guidance on how to accept or review two-dimensional data for their permitting process. They're working on that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're working on it. So that's some of the limitations. At this moment, I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Garrett to dive into the floodplain mapping updates and then I'll pick back up with some of the, some of this information here.
I think they should give us a quiz.
You need a break?
No, 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 she's going to have to be quizzed after this. I said I need a workbook.
All right, good afternoon, everyone.
We're trying to coach him.
Just going over the update. So we'll bring this up into a couple of different sections. This is going to be the North Carolina floodplain mapping program, FEMA update. Just to give you an idea of where, what we're doing statewide, it's a little busy map. I can't see the legend from where some of most folks are sitting. All the bright green are maps that we have released over, since 2013 and that are now effective. And then as we move sort of west, all those bright blue counties are the ones that have been released, preliminary maps, through that mapping process. So we've done a lot of work over the last 10 years. Just to give you kind of an updated picture, starting back in October of 2022, we released Caswell-Gilford-Rockingham-Stokes. We had map releases in March and September of 2023 with several counties. March of last year as well as October, several more counties. And you can see back in October of this last year on Halloween, we issued several counties in western North Carolina. And again, those are mostly partial updates for specific streams and certain panels, not county-wide specifically. So every stream within those counties was not revised or updated. Coming up this year, we have four counties coming out in the spring. Those will probably go out in late March and then sometime by the end of the year, in the fall, we will have the French Broad Basin and some other counties in the central part of the state. So Henderson County will be part of this update. And again, as I mentioned before, this mapping is based on the discussions we had with the community back in 2015 to get sort of the wish list of studies to update and which streams need to be re-studied. This does not include any work, or I mean, any changes from HALENE. So this, all the, the base data, the survey, the LiDAR data that creates the terrain or the ground surface, all of that was conducted prior to HALENE, starting in about, about two or three years ago. Right now, where we are with the French Broad Basin is our hydraulics and Dfirm database. So that's the sort of geodatabase that's driving the mapping process. It's currently in process for Haywood-Henderson in Transylvania. Madison's work is completed and Buncombe is also complete. Their database is still being worked on as well. But all of the survey, like I said, all the modeling for the rainfall runoff and the 2D rain on grid modeling has been completed for those communities. And then you can see where we are. We've also finished other communities, Mitchell and Yancey, which will be released later this year, and also Davidson-Forsyth and a few others. So since HALENE, state of North Carolina is planning to re-fly the LiDAR data for these 41 counties in western North Carolina. And, you know, it goes far east as I think Anson County down there. So it's a lot of the sort of western portion of our state, which also includes the French Broad Basin and Henderson County. The pink counties are being funded through a collaboratory, the UNC collaboratory. They got the money, but it is a coordinated effort. The other portion, the gray areas, are also funded by the General Assembly and the Davie County. Little bright green or yellow area is being handled through the State Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. But again, all of the contracting will be done sort of concurrently or succinctly, so we will fly all those missions. We're going to do that this winter, so probably in February, when there's no leaves on the trees. But we also have to contend with the snow, so we've gotten a little bit of that recently. Snow is very reflective of that laser. And if it's very deep snow, then we're going to have inaccurate ground elevation. So we want to make sure that we're getting the best information for that bare earth LiDAR data. So once we collect that data, it still has to be processed. So it's just raw data. They're collecting all those points from the laser. It has to be ground truth and we have to quality control all that data. So we don't want to just slap something together and push it out without making sure that it's somewhat accurate. We expect by the end of this calendar year to have that data, if not sooner. And then at that time, we'll start looking at those two-dimensional models that Mike had mentioned earlier. Down at that last bullet, you'll see it says 2D BLE models. That stands for base level engineering. So they are a little bit coarser models and it is, we do provide that information through our advisory flood website. It is non-regulatory and is used to provide additional information for communities for planning purposes and also for the general public to help better understand potential flood risks. But again, as Mike had mentioned, it's not as refined as some of the other models. And, you know, we can certainly add more detail to those models and bring them into, into line with how we would do our normal flood studies for flood insurance rate maps or the flood insurance studies. But they're not quite there yet, but they do provide that additional information. We're also looking at aerial imagery post-storm and comparing that to the current floodmaps and looking for areas where the stream or river channel has migrated outside the special flood hazard area. So we want to highlight those areas. So if, if those would be good indicators that the area needs to be re-studied. But we also have to contend with what's the plans for the future. So if we're planning to move that stream back to its original location or there's, you know, especially if we're working around some of the DOT projects and roadways, you know, we don't want to jump the gun and do a study that then becomes inaccurate because we're planning to shift it back to where it was previously. So there's a lot of coordination and things that need to take place before we can get new updated maps following HALENE.
So I serve on the French Broad MPO and I know that like US 74 in Bat Cave, they're actually, I know the DOT is actually working on engineering now for repositioning that road. How will this affect it? Like is it, I mean, what is the order?
Right, so, and we're in coordination with DOT. We've had a good relationship with them for almost the last 20 years. And they work very closely with our mapping program and floodplain compliance. And they want to make sure that they're not causing any additional harm. DOT is also going to fly LiDAR for their road corridors. So they'll do additional survey data for those areas to make sure that they're capturing that. And they're going to do that both, I think, prior to the construction and following the construction. So they're going to re-study that and they will provide additional models to us. And again, that's a partnership that we have with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And that area is, you know, from Bat Cave all the way down to Chimney Rock was hit pretty hard, especially on the, on the highway. So they're really trying to figure out how best to, to get that roadway back open and make it as resilient as possible without causing any additional impacts to the surrounding properties. All right, so now we have additional available data. You can go to any of our web applications. We have our flood.nc.gov website. That's sort of where the main information is. And then you can link to our other web applications like FRIZ or Flood Risk Information System. That's where we have all of our effective and preliminary flood studies. You can go and look at those maps, you can compare them. Then we have the advisory flood data, that's that non-regulatory website. And then FIMEN is our flood inundation mapping and alert network. That is where we have all the stream gauges and use that for alerts to let people know when the flood is coming. So here's flood.nc.gov. Again, those web applications links are in the upper right-hand corner. We just launched a new FRIZ site this year, kind of right in the middle of the event, which may not have been the best idea because people were using the old site and then had to switch to this new platform. But it is a more modern, it's also mobile-friendly. So the old site could not be used on a mobile device. So there were some limitations there. This should be a lot easier to use, whether you're using your phone or computer. Again, you know, this just shows the flood hazard information. You can type in an address and visit that particular site. And funny enough, that's actually where our office is located. In Durham, yeah. This is the map that shows all that 2D BLE work that's being done. And you can look at, you know, some of that goes back to 2019, following Florence and Matthew. So all that yellow area was previously done. We just released the French Broad area and those orange counties from fiscal year 2021, and we're moving our, our way across the state. So we're hoping to have the whole state completed within the next couple of years. And as the data becomes available, we will release that on the website. And again, this is the advisory flood site. This has a launch, you know, page that gives some background information and then you can get into the viewer. When you first visit the viewer, it shows the entire state. The areas highlighted in pink have been, or red are the, where, where we have this data. As you visit a site, and this is Hendersonville here, the dark gray areas at the initial scale the dark gray areas at the initial scale shows the effective flood insurance rate maps or flood insurance study, flood hazard areas or their special flood hazard areas. And all the blue areas are areas outside the flood hazard area where we're showing potential flooding. It also defaults to the base flood or 1% annual chance. There's a slider at the bottom of the page where you can toggle between various events there. If we zoom into the structure, here we are at City Hall. Again, this is the 1% annual chance. You can turn off the regulatory layer or as you zoom into a structure, it automatically is turned off and you just see the, the flood layers here. Again, you can toggle it back down, all the way down to the five-year or 20% annual chance event. This is the 25-year event, I believe. And it also goes all the way up to the 1,000-year, 0.1% annual chance. And again, this is for informational purposes, but it also shows in addition to more of the channelized or riverine-type flooding, it also shows what we call pluvial flooding, which is the accumulation and ponding of rainfall. And again, this is a different type of model, as Mike had explained. This is what we call a rain on grid or rain on mesh. So we create that terrain surface and drop the rainfall on it and then look to see where that water accumulates and then how it moves through that terrain surface. If you click in the blue shaded areas, it will give you all of those return intervals and the elevations of the, the water surface for those different events. If it says no data, then that means there's, there's no flooding from that level of event. So in this particular case, the five and 10-year events don't have any impact. And again, we would only map areas that have a depth of half a foot or more for this particular viewer, just to cut down on what we call the noise of the, you know, otherwise we'd have these little blue dots all over the map. So just trying to clean it up a little bit, make it a little bit more relevant. Also, in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see basin report. Each one of those basins, and it's the HUT 10, so watershed level. You'll get an engineering report with all the information about how they conducted the study, the rainfall data that went into it and all that more technical information. But it's also good to understand the background of how they did those as well. Any questions about the mapping process? So again, North Carolina, we're very fortunate to have all these resources that people can use.
Okay, so you, we have preliminary maps that'll be coming out later this year.
Right.
But we're also redoing the LiDAR mapping. So because of HALEEN.
Right.
So is it going to take 10 more years to add in the data from HALEEN? Or is that going to be kind of like overlapped with the preliminary ones?
It will sort of be overlap. What we're going to do first is update this mapping based on HALEEN and then look at those areas where we're seeing major differences and then come back and meet with the communities to say, okay, where do you think we really need to focus this? This is what our data is showing. Are you seeing any other areas? And then we can potentially accelerate that. But I haven't been given any details on what the plans are after we get to that point.
But it's not like we're starting the process all the way over. This is kind of being put in there.
But, you know, FEMA's expended their resources and so is the state to do the work that we've done so far. So we're still going to release that information. And just to kind of put that into context, for example, some of the studies in the French Broad Basins, particularly the French Broad River itself, is based on an older model that FEMA doesn't use and the Corps of Engineers doesn't support anymore from the eighties. So that particular model, although we probably won't see major differences in the flood elevations, it just will modernize the tools and make it easier for folks to do those no-rise analyses and the Clomar-Lomer studies because they have a better working model to, to deal with more modern tools. So it's a little bit less cumbersome. And, you know, as we all work through this process and get older, it's hard to find engineers that know how to use that HEC-2 product. And it's also hard to find a computer that will run the model because it's, it's using a different, you know, older sort of operating system. And, you know, the newer computers can't, you know, you have to add a special tool to dumb down your computer or have a special machine dedicated to run that model now because it just does, it's not supported by the modern computers. So that's another problem that we run into with, with some of the engineering firms. So any other questions?
So Steve, the new map, we're based on the map that's coming out in the fall. We're based on the new modeling instead of the old modeling.
That's correct. Yes, that's right.
Based on the information we have will be the most up-to-date minus HALEEN.
That's correct. And again, the models are snapshot in time. We do the work at a particular time. We know things change over time. There's always construction and other things that change. So we try to update the maps, but, you know, over, like I said, with some of the, especially the larger rivers like the French Broad, we might not see huge differences in the flood elevations or even the extents of the floodplain. And in other areas, we might see major changes because of the, the type of development or if we've made other adjustments, especially in the smaller watersheds. So it's kind of dynamic depending on the, the river system itself. Any other questions?
I don't know if this question is for you, but when Mike was talking about the floodplain functionality and that it was subjective, is, is there a standard for, you know, like judging the functionality? Or is it just kind of all over the board and then like, you know, if you were to follow some sort of policy?
I don't think there's a set definition for what, I mean, the function of the floodplain at the base level should be to be the area where floodwaters go when it floods. And ideally, that is preserved in a natural state where there is not risk to people, property and, and utilities and things like that. But in the real world, where we have private property that is inside of an area that is regulated by a government entity, the government can't just come in and say, you cannot do anything here because that is what constitutes a taking of land. And we are not compensating people in the floodplain for their property. If, when we say, if you restrict development to a point that someone can't develop their property, that's when you get in trouble with, you know, a taking of property and you're not reimbursing or compensating someone. So there, there's a balance there and, and we can kind of discuss that more. You know, there are other things that we as a community can do to, I don't want to use the word restrict, but direct development in the floodplain so that it is, for instance, less dense, so that you don't have, you know, very dense development in the floodplain, which creates issues for public safety and emergency response and things like that. You know, you could, people can say.
What is happening?
You know, that, that's an example of, of, so. But I, yeah, I wouldn't say that there's a, it's a balance.
And I think we'll have a, once we get through all the presentations, we'll have a little bit more time to have those kind of conversations for you, for us to talk about where council may want the staff to start going.
Okay.
I've got a quick question for Steve. Steve, can you talk through how the model or how the new maps might take into account some of the more recent climate data or rainfall intensities or, or if they don't?
I think with this round, we're not really capturing that. We are working with DOT and NOAA to update the, what they call Atlas 14. They're going to be issuing Atlas 15 pretty soon to adjust the rainfall information. Again, with the, that two-dimensional modeling, the advisory site, we do look at the, what they call the rainfall plus, which instead of being the median, we're looking at the 95% confidence limit for the base flood. And then we also add 10%, 20%, 30% to the, the rainfall to, you know, try to start capturing that. But FEMA and NOAA weren't quite there yet. But we, we do recognize that it is probably something that needs to be considered. It just takes time to adjust those models and make sure that they're getting that information right. And, and of course, we'll see how quickly that continues to change or how much more intense the rainfalls become over time. I think Houston area around, or parts of Texas, they've already sort of done those updates. And, you know, they've seen some significant changes. But of course, we saw that, you know, several years ago when they had those large floods in the Houston area and just completely inundated the city. So, you know, it is something that we will be working on in the future, but it won't be captured in this latest update.
Okay, so following up on what, what Steve was discussing, great presentation on the kind of nuts and bolts, the process of how the maps are created, where we are in the update process and, and what that'll look like for our community. So I, I'm not going to dive too far into this process one. There, there's kind of three ways in which the maps get updated. The process is that FEMA initiates it. That's probably the most, you know, frequent or the most likely situation. There's also community initiated. So a community can go to FEMA and say, we want to look at updating our flood maps. And then there's a, what, I know it's a community initiated twice. The second one is the cooperating technical partner, which is a, as FEMA states, an innovative approach between FEMA and state governments to help kind of expedite that process and, and make them, you know, create, it fosters more input from the communities in which FEMA is working with. Now, at the local level, okay, so the, Steve mentioned an effective map and a preliminary map. The effective map is the map that's in, has been adopted and that is, is, is what we're going off of. The preliminary is that new data and, and there's a review process. So if, once the effective map has been adopted, there are processes by which property owners and developers can, can basically petition FEMA and say, we disagree with this or we want to do something that would change the designation of a single parcel of land or a couple parcels of land. Okay, and so those are what are called letters of map change. And, and the, one of them is called a letter of map amendment. Basically, applicant submits documentation to FEMA that says, my property, the, the map is wrong in this location and my property is not, should not be in the special flood hazard area. Typically, that happens when the, the land, what is called the lowest adjacent grade. So if you have a, a structure, the lowest adjacent grade is where the land meets the structure, the lowest point there. If that is higher than the base flood elevation or at the base flood elevation, that would be justification for, for a letter of map amendment saying, okay, the, the map was wrong. Then there's a, a letter of map revision based on fill. That's your Lomer F. So again, if we allow fill in the floodplain, someone could fill up a portion of the floodplain. So there's a Cypress Run is a development that utilized that. They placed fill and built houses up on the fill. They got a Lomer F to say they were outside of the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain. Okay? So that's that process. You put fill in the floodplain, you elevate land above the base flood elevation. And so now you are not subject to the special flood hazard or the floodplain regulations. Alternative mapping resources. So this is just a, if, you know, it's great to hear that we're close to having the new preliminary maps. If, say it was another five years or something off there, or other options that the community can consider. Part of this is, and I didn't go into too much detail, but the state is working on a model, the, the second model ordinance, which has some provisions that allow more flexibility for a community to adopt different flood maps. So there's the preliminary flood insurance studies, which FEMA directs those. They're working on those now. There's what are called community flood hazard areas. That's where the community would go out and do a flood study of its own outside of, of what FEMA is doing and say, we are going to now regulate this area as well. And, and it, it's supported by things like previous high watermarks, hydraulic H&amp;H study, hydraulic and hydrologic studies and other, you know, defensible data that says this is, we know this is a flood area, but maybe it's not mapped because it's too small of a stream or some other, you know, situation. And then there's the Advisory Flood Studies, which is what Mr. Garrett was speaking about, that, that take into account, they're, they're a little more conservative in terms of estimating flood risk. Now, all that being said, and, and something that I kind of want to point back out from the beginning of the presentation, and something that Mr. Garrett and I have spoken about, and I think Mr. Fox can, can echo this, is that, you know, it is our responsibility, this council and then the staff, to enforce the floodplain regulations in the city. So you can adopt what, what you want, but you have to be willing to then enforce that. Okay? And where communities get in trouble with FEMA is that they adopt things that they either are not equipped to or do not want to enforce. So we could say, well, the HALEEN high watermark is here and this is going to be our new regulated floodplain. Well, then we have to take on the burden of enforcing those regulations in that new area, the impacts that that has to the property owners in that area. So there, there's a, again, there's a balance there. You can say we're going to, you know, create this giant flood map, but you then have to be the one to enforce that. Okay? So that kind of ends my discussion presentation. And now I'm going to turn it over to you all. So, and so you can discuss this very broad topic. Yes, sir.
Before we do that, let's ask Andy to give a very high level. Again, just so council have that in the back of their mind that they can talk about in February as it relates to if they wanted to do any kind of moratorium. There's been lots of conversation in the community about moratorium. So maybe a good time and then we can get into reasonable development.
Sounds great.
So, guys, we need it back. Apologies to the audience, I, it didn't upload. So, um, so to talk about moratoria, a moratoria have been around for a while. As part of 160D though, the General Assembly, they codified it and put how you put a moratoria in place into the general statutes. And it's a lot more involved than it used to be. So first of all, what is a moratoria? A moratorium is a temporary halt, a pause on some type of development. And the way that you do that is you halt or pause the issuance of development permits, like zoning permits, building permits, certificates of appropriateness. It's any type of administrative or quasi-judicial approval. That is what a moratorium does. It halts those. And you do that through the adoption of an ordinance and it's up to city council to set the parameters in that ordinance of, is it going to be all development? Is it only going to be development in these certain areas? Is it only going to be these types of permits? How long are we going to pause the issuance of those permits? So those are all things that you would need to think about if you want to consider adopting a moratorium. So one of the first things to understand though is, and I, and I think you see this through the legislature and how the legislature land development statutes have evolved, but you cannot adopt a moratorium for the purpose of developing new or amended plans or regulations governing residential uses. So if part of the purpose for your moratorium is to adopt something that's going to govern residential uses, you can't do that. You can regulate commercial all you want, but there is a limit on applying a moratorium to residential uses. You have to have a public hearing. If your moratorium is going to be 60 days or less, you have to give advance notice, advertise in the paper. If it's going to be 61 days or more, you have to advertise twice before you have that public hearing. And there are going to be certain things that are going to be exempted from the moratorium. So everybody's heard of a vested right grandfather things, right? You get a building permit or maybe you've made substantial expenditures in reliance on a valid governmental approval. Or maybe you've got a site-specific development plan approved. Those types of things are going to be exempted. The moratorium would not apply to those things. And so for some things like a special use permit, you just have to have applied for the special use and then it's going to be exempted. So it's, you know, there are some limitations on what it, what it's going to apply to. Now you got to do a little bit of advanced planning before you put one of these in place because in your moratorium, you have to state, make some required statements. First, you have to state the problems or conditions that are necessitating the moratorium. Why are we doing this? What are we trying to address? And then you have to state what alternatives that you considered to a moratorium and why those alternatives were not. and why those alternatives were not adequate. So it's somewhat of a last resort. The moratorium is somewhat of a last resort. As I said, you have to determine which development approvals are going to be subject to the moratorium. And then you have to say how a moratorium on those approvals will address the problems or conditions that led to the moratorium. And then you have to state the date for termination and why that duration is reasonably necessary to address the problems or conditions stated. And then you have to have an action plan. Your moratorium is actually supposed to have an action plan, a statement of the actions, and a schedule for taking those actions that are proposed to be taken during the moratorium to address the problem or condition stated. And then lastly, once it's in place, you can't extend it or renew it unless you've done everything you said you were going to do in the moratorium, and new facts or conditions have arisen. And then you have to go through this same analysis as to those new facts or conditions, and why that justifies the imposition of a moratorium. So as you can see, it's something that you have to do a lot of planning and thinking about before you would impose. Any questions about that? Second?
So, yeah, we just wanted to give you an overview. Obviously, you've got that in front of you. Let you think about it. Individual questions, I'm sure Angie would be glad to answer, you know, individually, and then we can discuss it as a council when everybody's together in February.
Happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
So we're right on time. An hour and 15 minutes in. I think, I'll just say it in front of you. I think we're lucky to have Mike Huffman. I'm just, I'm very impressed, continue to be impressed with the information. So at this point, your staff is here. Lots of information has been brought at you. Lots of things have happened the last four months since Helene. I know there's been lots of conversations in the community. You've heard a lot of things, a lot of things have been brought up to you. So the question for you is to ask staff, in this conversation about what is reasonable development, I'll stand up here. You got other questions?
No, just some additional information, time permitting.
All right.
You know, and then I think there was a direction. Okay. And then a slide.
Is this a link to the map?
It is, yeah. So I know, you know, during the comp plan, there was a discussion about available land in the city of Hendersonville. What, you know, land do we have available still to develop? Because that impacts affordable housing.
Can you click a link?
And so we were able to work with our great GIS team to put, to pull that data from the comp plan and put it into a web viewer and kind of understand better, you know, a lot of the available property for development is in the floodplain. So I think the way that's described in the comp plan is that it is restricted because there are restrictions. So that's another, you know, as the discussion of changing regulations of the floodplain or things like that, you know, that has impacts on other aspects of your goals as a council.
That was a question of the council as we did the comp plan. What, how did the floodplain impact development in and around the city? So there's your map. Thanks to our engineering team, our GIS team for that. So want to make that available, and we have that as a layer on our GIS. So kind of conversations from a city council's perspective, listening to what we've heard today and hearing from you. A couple of things, let me start at a high level. So also, you heard, and Lou, you jump in here and any of the other community development staff. Mike talked about development that occurred pre-1982. Pre-development, you know, we've been building in Hendersonville since the 1800s. The comp plan does talk about areas that may have been developed in, prior to the floodplain maps, that we would encourage over time that at least part of that property would be returned to floodplain, if it's feasibly possible. And we would do that through programs, such as a FEMA buyout program that we're going to see as part of Helene. So am I saying that correctly? There's an area, if you look at the comp plan, there's an area, particularly in the south, off South Main Street, you know, around Rainbow Highway and Spartanburg, that area that has been delineated as an area we would, over time, if possible, could be returned to natural floodplain state. Now, that's, it's going to be voluntary, you know, us, or the city's going to have to buy out those properties from those owners at whatever cost, you know, be fair market. And so that is one thing to think about as it relates to development around the floodplain, is that, that is contemplated in your comprehensive plan. There are certain places that we would encourage, and we have approached property owners in that area about using the buyout program to buy it, it become city property, and then we would return it to a natural state. But it's up to that property owner to get into that program, to accept it. But we may have more opportunity after, post-Helene than we did before. But there's several folks there. So that's one thing to consider from a city council is how we encourage folks to participate in that program to return those properties to floodway and floodplain. But again, it's private property. Other things council may want to think about, and Lou and Mike, you jump in here if I get anything wrong, is there's two things in the zoning ordinance related to fill. It is part of the zoning ordinance, which would be a council decision as it relates to 25% fill for parking lots, 10% fill.
There's no fill. You can use 25% of the flood, 25% of the developments parking could be in the floodplain.
Okay, okay, sorry.
But they can't fill that area.
Okay, okay. So you're putting impervious, but you're not filling.
It doesn't have to be, it could be regular pavement. We would encourage impervious, but we don't have any way to require that.
So that is, that would be under city council's control to, or?
So depending on what the nature of the project is, right? So if it's a CZD, then some of these questions would come to you all, and there's an opportunity. You'll remember on the Southgate Apartments project, sort of negotiated with the developer for pervious pavers. If that were an administrative review, same project, staff don't have the administrative authority to require that. So depending on how a project would go forward, greenfield development is where we have the greater regulatory limitations on new development. So if a site's never been developed and it's, has floodplain, then we're limiting the allowance of new development within that floodplain to the 10%. Basically, you can't fill more than 10% of it. And you can put parking in it, but that is also limited in terms of the total amount. And then the second piece is redevelopment. A parcel has already had development in the floodplain. And when you read through our code, it specifically references avoiding, you know, deteriorating and nuisance properties, right? So if you've got a property in the floodplain and we make it exceedingly difficult to redevelop that property, you have the potential for blight over time. And so the redevelopment code is kind of designed to allow for a property that's previously been developed, needs to be redeveloped to do so. It is a lot more flexible. The standards around developing greenfield in the floodplain versus developing what I'll call brownfield or already developed property are, you know, there's a gap between the two. But all of that sort of sits on top of the floodplain damage ordinance.
Those are things are designed, and to think about the balance that Mike talked about, you know, we could make it stricter regulation, but you get into the takings issue. But also, we see that somewhat through, we see some of these properties through the South Grove area, through Martin Luther King, Seventh Avenue area. I mean, really, that is, if you think about, if you want the poster child for those properties that are really just kind of hovering out there above, that are not being redeveloped but are protecting their vested rights, not the, or their right to develop, you'll see that there's an area of the city through there where there's a number of properties that have been flooded a number of times, and minimal investment is being made to upkeep or, if that makes sense. So those are theirs. And so if you make it harder, you may become more blighted, is what Lou's saying, or we get into the situation where we may have to buy it if we make it. Is that, is that, am I accurate there? Is that?
That's a fair representation.
Madam, I turn it over. I can say it, and anyway, I'll be going to it soon.
Is there a world where, we're just going to go with Lou's terms, greenfield and the brownfield developments, their regulations are closer? It's like, not the same, but more similar? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Like, they just seem like they're very far apart. And like, I get that stuff was developed before, but like Mike said, we were developing things before we had all this technology. So like, why is it easier for them to maybe redevelop a property that could have possibly never been developed in the first place? Because it is a detriment that we didn't know about then. And that's fine, we didn't know about that then. But like, it just seems like that might be a better place to focus. You're welcome.
She just lobbed it.
Also, follow up to that one. With the parking, like saying you can put 25% of parking in there, is it possible to regulate the surfaces they're allowed to use in that parking? So we could say, yeah, you can do 25%, but it has to be pervious.
Yes.
Cool.
But it does come, you know, that does come at a cost.
I should have gave you the easy question first.
And so, you know, I'll look at, you know.
I'll add on.
That seems like a compromise to me.
There is, you know, the flood damage protection ordinance does not prevent development or redevelopment. It's just that they have to be compliant with the current flood damage protection standards. So for a, you know, non-residential development, that would mean that a new structure in the floodplain would have to be flood-proofed, which reduces, you know, potential future loss. It would also, you know, help with public safety, I would imagine, during a natural disaster. You know, you think about like a gas station or something like that. And then there can be also definitions of, you know, critical or high-risk facilities that you don't want to let be in these areas, where you're just saying, okay, well, we're not going to let, you know, fuel storage operation in the floodplain. Or, you know, we're not going to allow, and there's, there is a definition of critical facilities, you know, healthcare facilities and things like that that already are, you know, are not allowed in those high-risk areas. But, you know, those could be some things that, you know, I think that the flexibility with the placement of fill is one that, in my opinion, could be addressed. That is not, you're not, you're not taking, but you're saying, we're not going to let people continue to put material in the floodplain that is going to take up flood storage area.
And that's where I was going next, because I think that is really the elephant in the room as it relates to new development around our area is where are we allowing fill in the floodplain? Even though it's right now, it's limited to 10%.
For new development.
For new development. So that may be an opportunity there. But, so.
So is there any limit on fill for redevelopment?
No. The way that, not in the percentage approach that the greenfield element has. So greenfield specifically establishes a standard that it's 10%. The language for the redevelopment parcels is more along the lines of you won't decrease the functionality of the floodplain. So it's, it's a little bit more.
That was what I was talking about.
And I want to comment is that that was subjective.
That is subjective, yeah.
Yeah, that's subjective.
I think if proven things in court, it's going to come down to expert opinion. It's going to be engineering opinion as far as whether it will or will not increase the functionality of the floodplain.
Good thing you have such a good expert.
And the burden would be on the developer to do that, too.
Yeah. So that part is, you know, there's more of a flexible element there, which, you know, it's not something where we can just say, well, you've gone past 10%. 10% of an acre is 0.1 acre, and you've done more than that. And so you're not allowed to do that. A couple of other things I know that we've talked about, and I was hesitating because I didn't want to necessarily interject ideas, but we do certainly see ways that you could pull the way that redevelopment language in the code is used closer to the greenfield. We've also talked about outdoor storage being somewhat of an issue in floodplains that we don't regulate.
And there is, I think it was about a year ago today, January of last year, presented on the community rating system, which is a, there you go.
Go back to that slide.
So for our new council members, that is a voluntary program by which communities can take on higher floodplain management standards. And in doing so, they then receive, the flood insurance customers in that community then receive a discount on their flood insurance premium. So it starts at 5%, it can go up to 45%. It's similar to the FIRE, the ISO classification, okay? So currently, we don't participate in that program. In some, we have investigated it. One thing that would have to happen is we have to have what's called a community assistance visit, which is basically where the state and/or FEMA come in and audit our program and say, you are doing everything that you're supposed to be doing. Our last one was under our previous floodplain administrator, Ms. Frady, when we passed that one. But it's been over five years since we did that, so we'd have to have a new one. But, you know, we already do a lot of things that would earn us points in that program, things like having updated flood maps. The state does a great, does a lot of things that add points to that program. But things like adopting a higher free board, or there's some specific recommendations in the CRS manual. One is about outdoor storage. There's another whole thing called compensatory storage, which is kind of a, you know, there's mixed opinions on that. But basically, you say like, okay, well, if you're going to develop here and reduce floodplain storage, you have to find somewhere to make up for that storage. Some communities do that. Again, the density limits is another option there. And the prevention of placing fill is one as well, where you say, we're just not going to allow people to place fill in the floodplain. So those are some examples of potential, you know, ordinance revisions that we've discussed. Yes, sir.
So if I may add to my, the state, it takes 500 points to get class nine, which is a 5% reduction of the flood insurance. State does about 450 of those points because of the mapping pieces that we give you, the engineering availability that we give to you, and the mapping that we do, and so your ordinance isn't that kind of thing. As you said, it does take an audit within the year of your application to the CRS program. And then you already have higher free board. You already have, you know, greenways and those kind of things that you can look into from the CRS manual.
Stormwater management program, you get points for that.
It takes another 500 points to get to the thousand, which is that 10% discount. Now, you've got multiple staff, so.
We've got two certified floodplain managers.
So putting the workload, because you have to maintain all of your elevation requirements. You send those in now on an annual basis. They're reviewed, you know, and we do a good job. Susan did a good job when she was here of maintaining those, making sure they were right. So it's a little bit more burden on the floodplain administrator. But in a shop that has at least, you know, two here and one that is as good as what you followed, is your community would be, in my opinion, advantageous to look at that 5% discount anyway and see where you go. My recommendation to you would be, don't go into it with an expectation, oh, I'm going to get to a seven. Because it does run the ISO, just like the FIRE insurance does, and the lower the fire department rating is, the more reduction is in the FIRE insurance. But I'll put more pressure on the floodplain administrator then, because he's dealing with a lot right now. But that 5% is easy. And I will do my part as his representative here. And I, I will do my part as his representative here, I'll do my part to help Mike and, and the manager and you guys get where you need to go, get that piece up.
Given the fact that there are other elected officials too in the room, um, and some in smaller communities than Hendersonville that do not even have the resources that we do. Um, are there capabilities to share some of these resources with some of the smaller communities? And what resources do they have available to them to help? Um, and then also just because we have other elected folks in the room. Um, I think it's important to advocate with our state and federal elected leaders about, um, like being able to update these firm studies in a timely manner and getting the federal resources that we need to be able to do those things. Uh, and then also, and I know that Mike has made like miraculous feats in this, but like our waterway maintenance, um, those are huge, huge issues because, um, so many waterways that are not properly maintained contributed significantly to the flooding in Helene. And so, you know, just advocating for, you know, I don't know what the word is called, safer waterway, ma- better waterway maintenance and.
Yeah, and the waterway maintenance in particular, that's again, a balance because from a state water quality standpoint, you know, they're not advocating for you to just go cut everything out of the stream. There's, there's very specific permits and things you have to pull before you start working in a stream at all. And, and so, you know, there, the county in particular, they ha- have been ve- the Soil and Water Conservation District has been very active. There's a, what's called the STRAP program, it's a, uh, through the, um, I think USDA, but it's basically a stream flow rehabilitation. And they go, you know, it started on the eastern part of the state after hurricanes there, because they get these huge debris flows that just, you know, block up the whole river. After Helene, you know, Army Corps, different agencies have been working to address the impacts of Helene. Prior to that, the county was working, um, to address smaller snags and things like that, um, you know. So I think that ties back into like floodplain mitigation projects. So where we can acquire property or work with, you know, other developers that are willing to do floodplain mitigation on their parcel. We've had success with that with, you know, in the past and look for those opportunities. But again, as you said, advocating for the funding to do that, um, is, is a big piece of that, you know. The, the, the only upside of Helene is that it has opened up these funding resources that we can then capitalize on and can make some progress in those areas.
Well, and you've been able to bring in millions of dollars in grant funding for the city of Hendersonville. And I know several of the projects that you're working on and have previously done will impact the south end of Main Street and, and should improve things that are down there also. So, I mean, those projects and that grant funding is very valuable to us because it, it is gonna make an impact to our community. And when we already have, you know, limited land to develop, um, that makes a big difference for us in being able to, you know, build density and affordable housing and those types of things too.
Uh, I'm also interested in this fifty percent rule loophole, it sounds like as well.
That's, yeah, so that, in terms of ordinance amendments, so other communities will adopt a ten-year window. So, you know, people aren't using that one year and saying, oh, I'll come back in a year and do this. So that's an easy kind of lift that you can do. Um, you know, there's, that's kind of the standard, you could, you could go whatever year period you want. Um, ten years is one that I've heard where, where folks will say, okay, well, over a ten-year period, if you're planning to make improvements. That way, you know, someone's not gonna usually wait ten years to go from phase one to phase two, it just doesn't financially make sense.
And if y'all remember, the real world example of, of that exact thing was the redevelopment of the nursing home.
Yep.
Behind Papa's Beer.
Yep.
Uh, where the, the property was in the floodplain and how much they were using volunteer labor, how much development was going. And getting back to us being eligible to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Because we had to enforce, you know, Mike told us, we had to enforce that ordinance or, you know, when Terry comes and does his audit.
And I coordinated with these gentlemen regarding that in, in particular.
We, if we didn't enforce our ordinance, which not made, you know, a number of nonprofit folks in our community and folks that were trying to help that group of individuals unhappy that we were, but if we had not in, that's the balance, right? Remember, if we put that standard, we're gonna have to say, sorry, you can't do that without raising that because it impacts everybody else's flood insurance, because we could lose our, our status in the NFI.
So I feel like that brought up another question too when we were talking about that project, because they were using volunteer labor and like, does that count?
Yes, so in this, in the definition of substantial damage. So if you got your brother to come do the electrical and your friend Joe to come put a new roof on it, that's great for you. But the way that they look at it is it has to be if you hired an outside third-party contractor, it's standard labor rates, material rates. If you get donated materials, donated time, it, that's good for you, great, but that doesn't take away from determining if it's a substantial improvement. Again, there's an exhaustive list of what's included and also what's excluded, you know. Submitting permits, getting survey, doing landscaping, things that aren't particular to the structure are not included in that cost. But if you put, you know, a box of nails you use to put two-by-fours in and the two-by-fours and flooring and plumbing, all that goes into that calculation.
So to add to that, that's something that Mike's not just coming up with arbitrarily. If you go to Google and type FEMA, substantial damage, substantial improvement, desk reference. If E twenty-one, forty, remember, it's thirty correct, then it will give you that list of specifics. That has to be counted in with that, where we protect in the voluntary labor or the donations or whatever in that substantial damage, uh, or substantial improvement process. So it's very specific, he's not just coming up with that being, I mean, the one and some, you know, giving the other. It's all straight across the board and as long as you follow your ordinance, you put in what the federal regulations require, you can have any higher standard that you folks, some ladies right here, choose to enforce. And that enforcement piece is what gets a clean audit from either the state, myself, Steve, and or FEMA could come do that. Primarily it's gonna be me, this is, this is my territory, I'm the one that does it. But you get that clean audit and you keep moving down the road. And whatever higher standards, there's an old adage in floodplain management, build it up higher or build it outside the floodplain. So it's the, the easy things are free boards. Oftentimes, a council, I'm just gonna say some examples here, well, I don't want to impose any more on my citizens. But by building it up, when they go get that flood insurance, there's gonna be a slight reduction because you had a higher standard in your ordinance. And they get that reduction every time they pay that premium. They only pay the cost of building it up one time.
Yeah, that's, that's an additional, like with the substantial improvement. So if you have a pre-firm structure that you're like, well, I'm gonna buy this structure and I'm not gonna bring it into compliance. Maybe it only costs twenty percent of, you can also reduce that percentage and say, well, if you invest twenty percent in the building, then that's a substantial improvement in this community. Um, but anytime they bring the building into compliance or further protect it from flood risk, when the flood insurance people come to, to, you know, determine their premium, they're gonna say, oh, well, you have, you know, the electrical's elevated. The building's floodproof, the building is elevated above the flood elevation. You get a reduction because it's a lower risk to them, so they're gonna reduce your premium.
Steve can help me out here, but over time, there has been local updates in the flood insurance program as far as the interior rating. And now we have something called Risk Two Point Oh, and that is more on you, the homeowner that's in the floodplain than just maybe with high point mountains. Whereas beforehand, it might kind of all be figured in, but now it's more specific to what Mike just said. It takes into consideration your H VACs, your utilities, you know, all those things, it's vents in your structure and what have. So it's all a big round of, of circumstances that play into what you, you, the council, you some lady that's legal counsel over here and the manager and Mike are really enforcing your ordinance, making improvements for this.
Ironically, um, just bringing it back, you know, we talked about comparison to regulations. I encourage everybody to go in and look at the Asheville Citizen Times from this morning. Asheville's getting ready to update some of their ordinances, um, and there's a, a nice article in there that they don't have a free board. And they, currently is the way I read the article is, they didn't, if property was damaged, they allowed an variance or a grandfather and then not requiring them to bring it up to the current standard. Currently in their current ordinance, they're changing that is the way I read it, Terry. But I don't know whether to read the article, but it made it, it, it made me, that, well, the staff in Asheville was saying that if they didn't make these changes, they may end up jeopardizing their, their ability. Their ability to, to be in the flood program.
They're seven in the CRS currently, so they have a ten percent discount. Um, I think there's only, you know, fifteen. Okay, well, then maybe an eight, because I think it mentioned going from a ten to a five if they didn't modify.
You have to enforce.
Well, gosh.
It goes to the enforcement pieces.
Exactly.
We have to be prepared to enforce.
Having thirty-three weight your calories, a hundred and fifty-seven pounds and problems. I've got more calls that say Helene in the last four months than I have about the same things. You know, there's no exemptions in floodplain management. Doesn't matter you're eighty years old, you live alone, there's no exemption there. I can't change the rules, Steve can't, legal counsel can't, it's the congressional, this, this is a federal regulations, state statutory authorization to operate. And that was updated during one sixty D with chapter seven, nine, eleven and, and chapter one of, of that, it goes into flood ordinances. You know, you're willing to enforce, when you step to the CRS level, you're going to a higher standard. You're, you're, you are agreeing that your floodplain manager is going to get the time and the resources to properly enforce that. As some council adopted, and it looks like you may look to make some changes for the better. So whatever you're willing to put in it to allow him the time and the opportunity to enforce that, and if your legal counsel's willing to stand behind, then you can do whatever you wish. My, my, my concern to you would be do what's in the best interest for your citizens and explain to them and educate your citizenry in the city of Hendersonville and those that are around you as to why or why you're doing it. Now's the opportune time with Helene on the four months in the, in the, in the horizon behind us that we're going forward.
And we would need to do that because invariably, five years down the road, that will be a structure that is damaged. Senior citizen, elderly, limited income. We're gonna have to say you, and there will be folks, there will be the community that will be upset that we're requiring them to spend enormous amount more money, move, whatever the case may be. So the community just has to be prepared. We can talk very, you know, high level and general, and I think it's the right thing to do, but we just need to educate the community that this is what's gonna happen, so.
Do you think when we start looking at making changes, it would be helpful when we're considering it to know like from you, hey, this is gonna cost me approximately X amount more staff time? Or like, there's no way in hell we're gonna get this done without having an extra person? Like, I think, because, because I feel like enforcement seems to be a really big. And we don't wanna put anything in that we're not going to enforce, that would be stupid. So I think it'd just be helpful for us when we're considering to know like, what kind of staff time are we talking about for this particular change that we wanna make?
Um, the whole meeting should be recorded as well, right? And then can, uh, we make all of these presentations and slides available somehow to the public as well? Just for, I feel like I need to go back through and slowly reread everything.
There's a five hundred and thirty-page document called FEMA four eighty I can share with you. That, that goes into great detail, but it's actually very, it's written at a level that someone who is not a floodplain manager can understand it. It starts at the beginning and goes all the way down through.
Four planes for dummies.
Well, if you wanna call it, I actually had the original title, it's floodplain one oh one, but I was like.
That's what she just had.
I was gonna say. I like the Cliff Notes version, thank you.
All about it.
Yeah, and like I said, there's a lot that is, that is, uh, all of those things, the standards. There's standards on how you build your foundation for your structure. There's standards on if it's on a crawl space versus on a slab. There's standards of how many vents you have to have in your crawl space if you're in the floodplain. So there is a hundred FEMA technical documents that explain and guidance documents on every little piece and part. Um, that, that's my job to look those up when someone has a question I don't have an answer to. Uh, but, yeah, so I was joking about the four eighty, but there's, there's plenty of resources out there and, and a lot more information just in the ordinance itself, which speaks to the specifics of like, of, you know, if you had a specific thing in mind, this piece of property, this project, I'd be happy to, you know, say, this is what this would fall into.
And I think too, I gather that development in the floodplain is possible.
Yes.
Because there are these federal guidelines for being able to do it. And then there are also not just the federal guidelines, but the local ordinances that actually seem to kind of even intensify what those ordinance or those policies are. So, um, there can be safe development. Uh, it's just subjective, I guess, sometimes.
And the entire floodplain ordinance comes from the code of federal regulations, forty-four CFR fifty-nine dot zero to sixty-five. At sixty-four, sixty-five, that's what Steve talked about in the mapping process, for fifty-nine and sixty, he mentioned the ladder and stairs. At sixty-point-three is a meat potatoes of it, fifty-nine is all those definitions. You can go to any Google browser and type in FEMA code of federal regulations and fifty-nine dot one to sixty-five and go review those. Uh.
If you're having trouble sleeping.
I left, I left Mike earlier a card for each of you guys. You have my number and my email, this manager, you have one too as well. So feel free to call, we'll help you interpret that desk reference. He'll just give you the link, he will probably kind of, it's about three hundred pages. But then that substantial damage, substantial improvement, and there are FEMA technical bulletins for floodplain stuff that talks about the floodproofing, it talks about the.
Elevating a structure.
Elevating, uh, electric, electric utilities, electricity, talks about a lot of them. So, and, and to say that the ordinance is comprised totally from the federal federal regulations and it gives the state statutory authorization in Article One of our model ordinance, which is that one sixty D. It also includes some of the one fifty-three A and the one sixty A, which were in one forty-three. Uh, tho- those things are all in there, because if you look through it, a lot of the things that went through one sixty D do not fall under, uh, the, the floodplain. There was a, a downgrading for the history meter piece and, and that still is, that's still occurring in the floodplain. So if Mike doesn't do what he's supposed to, and he's doing his job, the floodplain administrator's doing their job, and, and he will not comply, then you could find him and you could charge that person with a misdemeanor, you know, and take him to court. Uh, and the Flood Act two thousand, and you would go in your ordinance and read those general standards that Mike talked about and then those specific standards that he talked about as well. Some of those about no improvements and no tanks and those things comes out of the Flood, uh, Act of two thousand after Hurricane Floyd. Yeah, because if you were down there working like I was, there were gas tanks and all kinds of stuff floating under, up on the waterfront. So you guys, I appreciate from my, my standpoint of you being one of my community, that you are educating yourself as a council and you have the support of your, your legal counsel, your, your manager and your floodplain administrative staff that's trying to get you educated and make the best of it.
And for the folks in the room, one sixty D, one forty, thirty. Those are chapters in the North Carolina General Statutes, that's where that comes. If you go to the, you go to the General Statutes and look up one sixty D, that's our newest chapter related to local government. And one sixty A is, uh, that's what those are if he references, if you didn't know what federal references.
Chapter one gives them the right to adopt and enforce maps. Chapter seven is the zoning piece, because there are some, I see missing earlier, there are some things in the zoning ordinance that were played in the floodplain. Chapter seven is that, chapter nine is other regulated issues such as agriculture, those things. Chapter eleven is the building code, but in the North Carolina Building Code, they adopted part of the international building code. Then they have some of their own stuff in there. There are floodplain regulations that your food empressers or the city of Hendersonville, if they do that, if you have those, that are also entitled to enforce floodplain management regulations.
So directions for staff. I tell you what I've kind of heard from, from conversation is, um, maybe the best course of action for us is to, to go back as a team. Look at the low-hanging fruit as it relates to ordinance change, community rating system. There's a new, what's the new or, model ordinance coming out, do we know when that'll?
No, I'm still waiting to think back and think about.
So that's not.
Steve, Steve shared some of that language, so we have the ability to adopt that language before the model. And that relates to the, what I was talking about, the advisory flood maps. The, there's, and, and the city can require developers to provide additional flood studies in areas where one might not exist or that we know flooding's an issue that's not on the map, there's provisions for that as well.
There, there is also that CRS optional language in the current twenty twenty-one model that he has access to. That if you choose to become a CRS community, it tells you, uh, as optional language that, as a, as a model, you would take that out if you want someone to do that. If you're considering going to the CRS program, it tells you, gives you pointers or, or you get additional points in CRS for having this language in your ordinance. So it's somebody there to help benefit that.
So that may be the first start is, we can order, where there's conflict with ordinance. We've already kind of, as a staff, have talked about potential changes and conflict, that's one way we can change. Um, look at the CRS program and how that impacts what we're doing.
Fifty percent well, seems like it would be.
You know, if you, you know, the redevelopment, we can, you know, I've heard that, which is part of some of that conflict and stuff. So I think existing, um, start there, we've got new maps coming out in the fall, new data coming out with the Helene, which probably. which probably a little bit lagging behind that, but that'll be available. We won't, we use the maps as regulatory, the other, the Helene data, Steve, is really-
There, there's not a Helene-specific map. The advisory flood maps that, that they produced, that's, I think that's good for, you know, assessing risk. You could adopt it as a regulatory map, but-
But we would not use a regulatory map-
There's also one thing that Angie has brought up is there's the 500-year floodplain, which is already, which is an additional outside, which is, you know, very low. It's already mapped in the effective map.
500 years today, as you guys know, it is not regulated. Your, is, your funding staff, your community development processes for planning, that's the work that's in good work. If you choose to do something with that, that'll be a higher standard. Also, to say this, I've heard a lot about field in this room. Let me encourage you to not encourage or adopt no field, okay? You want to keep some field. Reason I say that is if you have to go back and put in the code, and you have to fill up some, do some roadwork, then instead of field, guess what it means? You know, that enforcement piece. So I, I would strongly encourage you to not include the language to stop any field. You know, you can limit it, but, and, and there's, there's language in other ordinances. I know specifically recently, Idaho County has updated and has some language in their ordinance about field, what can or cannot be done, and this, this leaves the ability to field in the roadways and, and shore and the things that-
I think we have those exemptions in our zoning ordinance as well.
We, we do have exemptions for a lot of what you were just referencing, so.
So bring a menu of things back for y'all to look at, pros and cons, right? You know, what's, what's the impact, you know, and go through a process because I'm, I'm sure you, like we do anything, put it through our advisory committees. You know, I'm sure the business advisory committee may have some comments about impact. ESB will have a lot, has comments, treat, you know, all of our folks. So come back with some ideas, let you look at it, put it through the process, through your-
Like an emergency response piece that we could get to for some of this around, like, resources that could be more utilized if there's more development in floodplains in the event of another storm?
Like the way that we respond, like, you know, if people are trapped in their house because it flooded.
Yeah, like if, if there's an apartment and a floodplain and it floods again, then I would love to hear from emergency response about what kind of resources we're asking them to utilize.
Our, our, our pre-planning, some of our pre-planning and things as it relates to.
I'll add to, so on top of all this, prior to Helene, this, the, the state, so we're part of what's called the South Mountains area, and, and there's a South Mountains Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is updated every five years, and that includes Polk, Henderson, Transylvania, and another county. Yeah, four, those four, Bunkum maybe, but, basically it identifies all risks, fire, landslide, flood, blizzard, extreme heat. And then in that plan, you can put in what the city would call a mitigation action plan. And these are specific items the city's going to do, like buy a better boat for swift water rescue or participate in the CRS.
Strategy and what your tactic is to mitigate or get mitigated.
One, that acts as a guiding document for the community. Two, it creates when disasters happen and funding comes available. When you have those things already identified in your plan, you can go back to hazard mitigation grant and say, look, we identified this and, but we need funding. And they're like, okay, that, you've got it. Not like that, but they say, you identified it, that higher prioritizes your request.
We also have another very good, my friend and colleague Jimmy Brizzi here with the county, the emergency manager. Jimmy, Jimmy's very well versed and had an emergency operations plan that I'm sure him should be a part of, with the fire department and what have you. So he's another good resource to bring in. Toby, Toby sitting over there has been involved in emergency services a long time ago. So, you know, those, those guys are wealth of knowledge to bring, they're pretty proficient about resources and sharing those. That's, that's a couple of good ones to have on the tribe.
And I will say, our emergency management folks did a phenomenal job of evacuating even before the storm arrived in areas that were predetermined to be flood areas. And so we had a plan that was executed and, and it saved a lot of lives by doing that. So we're very grateful for the plans that were already there and the, and the folks that were out knocking on doors. And, and they did that countywide. I know they were down in Back Cave and Gerton doing the same thing too. They've done an incredible job.
One other tool that you have, Steve mentioned his presentation with Feyman gauges. So I can relate this from Hendersonville. In October of 2015, when those went live to the communities. We were sitting down in the U C, my other side job besides floodplains, I get activated for the western office whenever we'd go operational for a storm. So we were sitting in the western office and all of a sudden, the person watching the Feyman gauges said, wait a minute, there's major flooding in the city of Hendersonville. There's a gauge somewhere here in this town that's, the gauge is under breach. So we call up Jimmy, we call up the Hendersonville Fire Department, hit some guys out there, come to find out debris had got trapped up around that cone where it, it showed the debris that was floating, cleaning the debris out, and it went on. So that, it does work.
Yeah, and we, so we did purchase the flood gauges. We have been working, there, I won't go into all of that. The gauges are, the gauges are, one of them is active. Three of them were, had to get repaired prior to Helene, unfortunately. Some of the technology related to them. But we had been coordinating, and then the company that sold them to the, us became a different company. So there's just been some logistical issues. We have contacted them and contacted Feyman to get those gauges, you know. IT, where's Jay? The, the API information shared with Feyman so that those gauges, and we have been discussing with Jimmy about putting additional rain gauges throughout the county because we don't have a lot, and additional stream gauges that would tie into Feyman. That those are, that's what like our public works really uses when they're like, a storm is coming, they can set up Feyman alerts that say, hey, water's rising.
You can also do that with the stream gauges, except the rain gauges just so rainfall. The stream gauges have scenarios built in. We, we currently own some in CEM. Also, US GS owns some, and obviously you guys own some here in Hendersonville. But you can slide a bar, and it will show you if we get this much rain, how much flood is going to take place. That's another great tool that will help you. And if you need explanation, we'll take our time and not, if you need explanation, I'll use that or better, you can call us.
And I think just in wrapping up to, you know, like, a lot of people in the public and our residents want to be able to do something to help with Helene and the flooding. And there are still places that you can volunteer in the county at. But one of the things too is helping to maintain our waterways. I know Lindsay and I have both like dredged streams. I think the last time when there was a-
One experience.
Leech that was found on somebody, we've kind of got a little shy about that. But there are a lot of things that you can do. And, you know, we take our kids out with us to help, you know, clean streams. And these are volunteer things that you can do and ways that you can help our community to, you know, make us more resilient for the next storm that happens or other, you know, water things that can happen. But I think just in general, thank you so much for being here. This was extremely informative and very overwhelming and, but I think just trying to educate ourselves to, you know, help us be better elected officials and policymakers and, you know, we're trying the best that we can. And you guys are the experts and we trust your opinions and all the information that you give us. And we're very lucky to have such great staff and resources in this area. So I appreciate that. Um, so, yes.
John, I just have a concern. When we, when we become educated about the floodplain, I hope that we can be better communicators to the underserved communities that was highly impacted with the floodwaters. They felt like they did not get the information and the time and man. So I just want us to look at that as a possibility.
I think that was it.
That's it?
Yep. We did all that. Acknowledgements. Thank you again to the state, Terry and Steve for being here. Really appreciate that.
All right.
Six oh one.
Not so bad. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you everyone for being nice.